Well, we were planning on coming and seeing you on Wednesday.
Don't.
So we're gonna shoot a picture with Dave.
Don't.
Did Dave tell you that? Does that work for you?
Um, okay, we're ready to start.
Good evening, I have to call the school board meeting for Monday, October 26, 2015 to order. Roll call please.
Dandy Creek here.
Howrun here.
Manland here.
Logan here.
Williams here. We have a quorum. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion to adjut the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Need a motion to second. Any discussion? All is fair in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. F, citizens and/or delegations, is there any, uh, public forum, is there anybody here this evening that'd like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to number two, Bright Lights presentation from Ashwabanon High School. Uh, Mr. Barnhart or Mr. Delson, did you want to?
Yeah, I can introduce Tom Barnhart, he's here with David Stroud and Jeremy Meyer along with Zach Pollitt. And, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about the expanding, um, manufacturing and engineering, learning opportunities that are becoming available through the Bo Mettler Innovation Center. And, uh, they have a Bright Lights presentation for us, so thanks for coming, you guys, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having us and good evening, everybody. First of all, I just wanna say, um, that we've got a lot of great things going on and we wanna tell you about them, but, uh, the way we set this up is to keep it brief because we know you've got a lot on the agenda tonight. So, I wanna hop right into it and, uh, try to give you a different perspective. I know you're used to seeing Dave and I up here, you know, doing everything we can to get everybody pumped up on this and, and keep moving forward, but I thought that it'd be really cool if we could look at what this is all about through the lens of a student, that's one of our, you know, all-star students and, and just a really good representative of our student body at Ashwabanon. So, if you don't mind, we're just gonna go through a little Q and A with Zach here and, uh, just kinda set the tone for what we're gonna be talking about and then Dave's gonna be giving you some, some updates on what's going on. So, Zach, why don't you come on up over here, buddy? So, be the teacher-student role here a little bit. So, Zach, I got some questions for ya. Uh, what's your plan for the next five years? You're a senior in high school now and you got some plans, so what, what, tell us about what your plans are.
Alright, so I plan to go to either UW-Stout or NMU for industrial design. I wanna work with, uh, work my way into a career that I can design and build and I wanna take my ideas and make them a reality.
Great. So, using our tech ed program as a framework, you know, and is, for this answer, for this next question, what, what courses have you taken, like, as electives in our area?
Um, so far, at Ashwabanon, I've taken Intro to Engineering Design, um, Engineering Design and Development, um, Intro and Advanced Wood Tech, Advanced Power Tech, and Consumer Automotive.
Okay. And, uh, using our, our tech ed again as a framework, what kind of, like, extracurricular activities have you been involved in?
Um, I'm involved in two clubs at the school. Um, the first one is Skills USA and I compete in a team problem-solving team. And, last year, I went down to UW-Stout, it was one of my first times at UW-Stout, and I competed. And, my other club that I'm in is Formula High School where students work together to build a car from scratch. And, here is, this is the car that we built this year.
Tell, tell us for briefly, like, what, what was the deal with that? You know, you, what, kinda speak for the group there in the, in the picture there.
Um, that was after a long weekend of racing and fixing the car after it broke.
Yeah. And, now, how did that car end up there?
Um.
Did that car exist, like?
Well, around this time last year, we had basically two pieces of steel and we all pulled together Tuesday nights every week after school and we all put a lot of work and effort into making it look good and also perform very good. So, that's basically the finished product after a long, fun weekend of racing.
That's awesome. Awesome. Okay. Now, um, so, what sticks out to you through, through these experiences you've done that helps you, that's helped you plan your future, like, going, you know, your plan to go to UW-Stout and be a maker in your future, you know, get a career where you can take ideas and make them a reality? What, you know, along your path here, what's, what's really, like, stuck out to you that's helped you make that decision?
Well, I got to work with a lot of different materials and processes and I also got to work with a lot of different professionals in the industry and I got to look and see, a lot, a look at a lot of jobs in our local area, but, most of all, I had a lot of fun and got to collaborate with a lot of different students.
Awesome. Last question, Zach. As you know, we've been doing, uh, some updates and planning some big things through our, uh, Bo Mettler Innovation Center in the tech ed area. Are you excited about that and if you are, can you tell us why?
Well, I guess I'd be a little bit more excited if I got to use it a little bit more, but, uh, I am excited because as we were building the car, we had to take it out of the, out of the high school and bring it over to NWTC a lot and we had to farm out a lot of the milling and painting that we couldn't just do inside of the school. And, by the Bo Mettler Foundation coming to Ashwabanon, we'll be able to completely make the car in-house.
Except for one thing.
Except for.
We can't do the bodywork.
We can't do the bodywork.
We have to rely on somebody here for that. So, so, don't, can't, we can't ruin that bridge. But, uh, yeah, so, okay, so, that's one thing that really, you know, that's pretty cool to you about the Innovation Center and all that? Okay, thanks for sharing, Zach, we really appreciate that. So, so, like I said, Zach is, is just like, he's just a wonderful student to have in class. This whole crew that you see in the background here, and there's a few students that aren't pictured, have just been our pride and joy. They, they just put in extra effort, they love being a part of us, our, our, our program. These are the students that call tech ed home, you know, they, they, they come there and, and there's camaraderie and there's a culture built around all that. And, I think that's what this is all about. It's not just about, like, transcribed credits and competencies and, and all these kinda crazy technical terms, it's more about, like, this culture around what we're doing. And, that's been the, the foundation of what we've done with this Bo Mettler Innovation Center and it's why we named it after Bo, because he was the start of that culture. And, I think that, if you knew Bo, you'd see a lot of Bo and students like Zach, you know, the people that made our, our tech ed program home. So, what we're doing is, uh, we're moving forward with that, we've talked to the board a little bit in the past and Dave is gonna take it away and just give you some updates of the kinda things that have happened to move the, the center forward and update that.
Yeah, if I miss anything, I'm sure Tom will scoop up and, uh, get it for me. Um, over the last couple of years now, we have, as teachers, we've gone to NWTC and get various trains so that when the center is up and running, we can offer articulated credits. Uh, this summer, we had a, pretty much a hole built in the walls that we can get machinery and things like that through into the automotive shop and then into the back of room 142. Prior to that, there was just a little door, we wouldn't have gotten these machines through there. Um, we had gotten a few years ago, a donation from Robinson Metals of a VF4, which is a really, really big CNC mill. We were able to trade that in and then along with a very generous donation from the Bo Mettler Foundation, we were able to buy a brand-new mini-mill from Haas. Um, that is the exact same thing that they have at NWTC. That was delivered Friday and it was hooked up today, not yet.
Tomorrow morning. Hooked up.
Your electricians will work a little bit faster, I guess, but, um.
Yes.
So, we're very, very excited about that. We can thank the Mettler Foundation enough. We're also working with NWTC, we've given them a bunch of materials, they're gonna go to their people who are in charge of doling out money and helping us schools and they're gonna make a decision on that and hopefully get back to us pretty soon. I hope you've heard a specific date yet or time for that. And then we're also working with the Manufacturing Alliance, they've had a very busy month. October is Manufacturing Month in Wisconsin. Uh, Tom and I just attended the Manufacturing First K-12 Awards Banquet, which they invite us to every year, which is really nice of them. And then we also took a, a big group of students there the next day for an expo and convention. Our students were able to talk to a bunch of area companies, manufacturers, they brought resumes with them, talked to these people and then they also saw a, a guest speaker that talked a lot about opportunities and, and having desire and stuff and what you do. Um, anything else that we are doing that I missed?
No, that, that sums it up really well. I'd like to, just, just so you know, we'd like to extend an invite, at any time, please feel free to come and check out our facility and some of the updates. Like to go into greater detail with answering, if we can answer any questions or give you a tour or anything like that, please feel like, our door is always open, we, we love showing off what we got. We've got some great things going on, especially our students, front and center, that they're just, we'd love to show you what we're up to. So, beyond this, please accept our open invite to come and check things out at any time.
I guess one other big piece of news I forgot to mention is, we actually lost an instructor, but we gained a new one, Jeremy Meyer, we, uh, stole him from Preble High School. Um, we're very happy to have him, if we, I guess, if we had a wish list beforehand of who we could have replace Mr. Olinsky, uh, Mr. Meyer was top on our list. So, we're gonna let him talk very quickly about some of the things we're gonna be doing that I would say are pretty innovative this year. Uh, a lot of them are coming out of his room.
Well, first of all, thank you for hiring me, I appreciate it. Uh, started about seven years ago and I was down at a training down in Milwaukee, at Milwaukee School of Engineering, I was talking to some tall bald-headed guy from Racine Park and he's like, "Hey, do you, there's a job opening up in Ashwabanon, what do you think of that?" And I said, "Oh, jeez, if I wasn't locked in what I'm doing right now, that'd be great, I'd be applying." Well, sooner or later, a few years go by and, uh, it turned around the other way. By the way, the, the other bald-headed guy standing over there. Um, so, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to be at Ashwabanon, looking forward. Uh, one of the things that was the kicker to make my decision was the vision that was coming and that was, uh, what was explained to me by everyone involved. I can see a vision and I see a future. And, where's it going? First off, um, the Haas Mini-Mill. Um, ironically, I talked to a lot of people, the Dennis Palatop, the gentleman actually originally designed the, the race car you see here, I'm still in email contacts with and just contacted him or talking to him this weekend on email. He builds all of his race parts off a Haas Mini-Mill. And, he would like to talk to us about sharing some of the parts or some of the files that our students could build in-house. Uh, he also shared the patented, his latest patent design for suspension, which I have shared with Zach and we are completely stripping this vehicle down, or making it better. Or making it better, make, or taking care of the deficiencies we ran into testing and it will be fully stripped down within, what do you think, Zach? By tomorrow? And, we will be making new parts, putting in, uh, new patented state-of-the-art suspension design on that and getting it ready for a race weekend. Um, last week, uh, Tuesday, we actually had an AJ Foyt IndyCar in with Zach alluding to the Tuesday nights. I'm still continuing the Tuesday night Formula High School build nights at NWTC. I've been training students on how to use the water jet. Um, we had a, a parent that has access to this AJ Foyt IndyCar and we had that in and students got to not only see the car, but we also brought in an expert, um, in the area from Formula 1000. He's a builder and a driver, so he talked about how they take tenths of a second off their times using the computers and that. Um, we also have a new product in, uh, we are prototyping a, what's called a short-course cart for Fulton Incorporated, they're a company out of Howard. It is a small, about the same size off-road vehicle. Uh, we're gonna be prototyping that with a V-twin instead of just a single cylinder for them and with Briggs and Stratton's help. Uh, we are also expanded to, uh, talking with, um, we have a link with Australia. The Formula High School program has been expanded over there and the gentleman in charge would like, is developing a skill-certified, uh, program, um, software program. And, he was, been in contact with me also about if we wanna develop that here stateside. It would be the state-of-the-art first one in the world.
Tell them briefly about the welding and then we've got a cutter.
Oh, we gotta cut her short, two last things, two, uh, Wednesday, talking forward, going forward with the Bo Mettler. Uh, Wednesday morning, we are having a, Mark Garrish, he is a master coach builder in the area, is coming in to talk to the students about custom metal forming and he will be in presenting in the Bo Mettler area. Um, so, if you would, it would be 9:30 in the morning. Uh, he is bringing something to show the students also.
So, the mystery car has not been announced yet?
Kinda have an idea what it is, um, but, uh, it will be undercover until after the presentation. And last, um, yes, I did go, uh, over the summer, I was skill-certified for SMAW-1 through NWTC, uh, which is, uh, a skill-certified welding and we were able to purchase a new Multimatic 200. Um, and I've already been showing some students how to weld both at the school and at TC. So, if that is something that the, uh, board would like to pursue, tell me when. Tell me when and where, I am ready to go. And, uh, look forward to working with the board and everyone involved. And, like I said, I can't see enough about, it's been such a great, uh, change and I am looking forward to and then thank you for everyone for making it such a warm welcome.
Thanks, Jeremy. So, um, just not to take too much time, if you, if you'd like, we'd like to answer any questions, but, uh, we understand you guys got a heavy agenda tonight, so, um, please accept our invite, come by any time, show you around and we've got a lot of really wonderful things happening, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, like us on Facebook, too, please.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular meeting held on Tuesday, September 29th. Schedule checks written, 9:22 to 10:19. Uh, 22 co-curricular contracts. And I believe that's it?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All is fair in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. H Superintendent's report.
Hey, just, I have just two items to report out on. This morning, we had a building project meeting at the high school again and, um, I'll send this around. This is sort of a preliminary draft, it's their first look at the overall building project rollout from the start of it to the very finish of it. Their, their timeline for the, for the auditorium and the pool that's interconnected, their timeline is still completion is October. Um, this morning, right now, what they're anticipating is the middle of October and it's pretty early to project exactly when that's going to happen, but they're saying about the middle of October. All of this, of course, is subject to change, given the weather conditions. Right now, what they've done is they've poured the footings for the auditorium, they're now working on the footings for the pool area, you're gonna start to see some walls already go up in the auditorium. And, uh, along with that, the building, uh, project, the core team that, for fundraising, met this Friday. We met for a couple of hours and basically fundraising is underway. There's, the committee is certainly still accepting donations towards the pool or, um, community center or auditorium. The purpose of our meeting is really to identify multiple areas that, to enhance the project and, and we basically prioritized a variety of the areas without getting into everything in any gritty detail on this. So, we came up with a list of about 15 areas, for example, for the auditorium in priority order, given donations, a lot of the individuals that are donating towards a project are not specifically designating the donation, which allows us then to do some things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise, of course, that would cut out of the project, so.
Brian, Brian brings that up, I just wanna make sure that everybody realizes that, uh, these groups that's been fundraising has raised over $400,000 more than what we've got approved. So, it's adding some things in there that are niceties compared to what we can just do as barebones in a referendum.
Absolutely.
So, I'll give you an example, upgraded scoreboard in the pool.
Colorado system?
Pardon?
Colorado system. Colorado system.
I don't know which one it is.
Don't know the system. Do you remember the new system?
Yeah.
There was three different models, Jay, it's not the one with the video component, it's the middle of the old one.
Right.
From a manpower standpoint, we decided to go with that particular model, that mean, means more to you than it means to me, if you know what I'm referencing.
Mm-hmm.
Still a huge upgrade. You know, even things like painting in areas that weren't designated to be painted, um, additional equipment for the, the stage area, you know, if you have more lines, just allows us to do a lot of things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise, frankly. I mean, today, we also priced out, uh, like, a video camera in the auditorium, to get an idea on that, that would go on a bit of doing.
Projector, not a camera, projector.
Yeah, projector. Wireless, you know, connections, we have, you know, things stubbed in in the auditorium. Would be district responsibility to look at covering what, what's needed to make it more wireless, accessible. Even the flooring, um, going from instead of a tile to more of a rubberized flooring in the, um, office area for the pool, which will be more sustainable, more durable, you know, easier to clean, something that, you know, Tom certainly appreciates when we talk about the maintenance side of that, so, just a lot of things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
Tile up instead of three feet of eight feet or something like that, I mean, that's, it's a huge dollar amount of things, I mean, $20,000 or whatever.
Right. The bathroom areas, they want a tile from a cleaning standpoint, so, just, um, big thanks to Melissa Marth and to Ken, you know, and all the work that they're doing and to help raise money and coordinate all of this. It's, we're pretty much right on schedule, I think in some ways, maybe a little bit ahead of schedule as the, uh, as Dave said this morning at the building meeting, the weather's really been so cooperative. Now, we're gonna run into a little wet weather later this week. The next things we're looking at doing is, um, blocking in some of the windows off the library area and we'll do that over this coming break coming up or Thanksgiving break, but, it's rolling. Pretty much on schedule. Sprinkler heads were put on the fields today, uh, between the middle school and the high school, they tested the sprinklers, pretty much all the top soils on it, if you haven't driven by that area, the last week or two, it's, they were hoping to start sodding that area tomorrow and about a third of that whole field area will be sodded, to give you an idea on that. The amount of sod that'll go on there, so. If they run into a lot of rain the next couple of days, obviously, it'll be gray, it'll be next week. Any questions on the building project? Then the other thing I just wanted to mention, I gave you a lot of information on the last board update, I realized, but the student survey now, the first round of the survey is now out to the entire staff, so they have about a two-week window to weigh in and it takes about 10 minutes to answer, I don't know, 12, 15 questions with some open-ended areas at the very end just to weigh in on, on the district. So, we hope to come back to you, I'm trying to remember what Melissa said, I think sometime November, end of November maybe, we'll come back with some results. And then that same survey will be issued again, you know, towards the end of the year in April or very beginning of May, so that we can look at the survey results, set some goals and, you know, the goal is to try to move the needle to make us, to make us better, so, we'll come back with more information on that.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? Okay, we'll move on to action items. Uh, number one, youth options. Brian?
Yeah, we just, um, you reported an attachment with your materials. Uh, 12 students have made youth options requests. Uh, Jill Keislich and myself and the school couns, or, school counselors met and went through the, the requests and, um, they meet the eligibility requirements under the Youth Options Program statute, our board policy, and so, we're just asking for your approval again of those requests. Do you have any questions, it's certainly.
Brian, you got a number of students that have got multiple requests in here? I'm assuming they're not gonna be all approved?
In fact, they, that's kinda, that's been happening more often than not and it's, um, because they, in case they can't get, uh, a request and because, um, you know, it all depends on when the course is scheduled, how it fits their high school schedule and, and so on. And so, what I've been seeing is some kids have made, uh, requests, but, uh, rarely are they able to fit all those requests into their, uh, their schedule.
Okay. Do you have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the youth option requests presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion to second? Is there any other discussion? All is fair in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Number two, inter-agency agreement. Brian?
Yeah, I just want, what this is, is talking to Chief Dunning, we have in practice, over the past couple of years, had an agreement as far as sharing information, student information, working with our police liaison officers. Learned that a number of the school districts around us have a formal inter-agency agreement and what this agreement is, it is, it allows the school district and public safety to communicate and share information. And as, um, officers on it would put it, you know, it's really more of a, a liability to cover not only the public safety, but the school district, the information to share and that would get questioned, you know, in the court of law or whatnot. So, his advice is that we approve this agreement. If we approve this, this will go to, I forget, the village committee, it goes to first before the village board? I'm sure that was nearly a kidding? The public, public works? So, if we approve this, this will go to the Public Works Committee at the village level and then it'll be taken to the village board level for approval. It's a confidential agreement, a confidential exchange of information, really the bottom line is, focuses on safety and security, to protect our community, to protect the village, so. Obviously, there is some information that would not be shared, given, uh, this agreement and it's all lined in there, but, otherwise, it's, there's an agreement for information to be shared back and forth between the two groups and really.
It's what we're doing right now.
Formally, it's been in place, you know, for the last couple of years.
Yeah. That's great.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to second to approve this inter-agency agreement? Uh, any discussion? All is fair in motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, number three, Carmier Parking Lot. Tom?
Well, we're to the point, um, um, in, in the tenure plan, it's come up for the, uh, renovation of the Carmier Parking Lot, as you know, we're looking to do some traffic flow redesign in there to separate bus traffic from school drop-off and whatnot. And so, now, we're to the point where we need to, um, have some master planning services in there that'll kinda do an assessment, a visual, um, scope of the project and then come up with conceptual designs and, um, with the traffic flow and some suggestions. And they'll work with me on, uh, developing it in the most cost-effective manner possible, so, what we need to do is hire for those services and, uh, we have a really good working relationship with Retler having done a lot of the work around the village and with the school districts, so, looking to, uh, accept their proposal.
Is this built in the budget?
Yeah, it is included in the budget and one of the things I've asked Tom to do is make sure we get it done this coming summer, so, a good portion of it is in this year's budget and then part of it's also gonna be in next year's budget, because it's a large project. So, we need to keep it, keep it on schedule to do it this summer, we need to get this moving.
Is this built in your five-year plan, Tom?
Yeah.
Pardon? Is this built in your five-year plan?
Yeah, the 10 to the five or 10 years.
10 years now.
10 year, 10 year plan, that's right.
These, um, last, uh, the next, this one and the next two items, Keith has contacted me prior to this and some of these things we, these agreements that we've, uh, usually gone out to bid on these things to get these, um, on these, on these different projects, but they had interviewed them and gone through the process and worked with these different, in these next three items and, uh, I didn't, I felt that as being prudent to come to the board and make the decision on what we wanna do, but it makes, I think it makes sense if we've worked with them before, they've been in our district and looked at these things, that it, to move forward instead of having to go through that as long as the bids are competitive and, uh, um, they assured me that they, they were.
And just so we're clear, we haven't really bid this in the past, what we've done is, we've selected an architect and they've included this in their fee and their fee is always related to the cost of construction. And it's one of the things I've always struggled with, where the architect gets a percentage of construction costs, now you give the architect an incentive to build a more expensive building. Where this method, I like better because we're paying them on a time and materials basis to do it, they no longer have an incentive to make the project bigger or more expensive, they have an incentive to give us the right, give us plans and if we don't like what they do, we have them spend more time, we spend a little more money to get exactly the drawings or the plan we want. So, I, I think this is a more cost-effective way and I, and we, it's hard to compare planning services and say this one's better than that because it's not a, it's not a widget that you can compare and say these are the same, let's take the lower cost one. There's a design and an engineering element to it and when we get to the next ones where we're talking with Brandon, they have a unique skill set that I. they have a unique skill set that I think if we hired somebody else, they'd go to Brander and do half of the work anyway. So, it just makes sense to work directly with them.
So, you feel that there was a discount by virtue of going this route?
I, I think it gives us more flexibility. It doesn't lock in that high cost or that incentive. Doesn't provide that mis-incentive to build a larger project than, you know, they're working with us instead of having that incentive to make it more expensive. Not that I think anybody's overbuilt something because they were, their fee was tied to it. But it just, to me, it always sat wrong that they were, their pay was based on how expensive the project was that they designed.
And, yeah, I mean, the, the dollars seem actually quite reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not, uh, auditorium pool type dollars, you know, but they're.
And just to be clear on what this includes, this does not include the cost of putting together the bid specs, which is what architects have done. They've done this part all the way through bid specs to helping with the project implementation. So, we're, we're segmenting it into sections, the way we're doing it. So, once we have a design that we like here, then we will work with them on putting together bid specs. And we'll be paying time and materials for their time to do that as well. But I think it's less expensive to pay time and materials than it is to pay a percentage of construction.
Would Retler be doing the bid specs also?
On this part of it, yes, Retler would do the bid specs.
The way I understand it, in the case of Brander, they would come to us. You make the decision to approve them with all this prior background knowledge and information, knowing all of our systems and having.
And Retler's kind of got similar, because they've been on so many of our facilities already. They have a better understanding of what we're dealing with, what soils we're dealing with, all those things. So, I think there's a learning curve advantage that they have because of the projects they've done with us.
I'll make a motion. Don't we accept the bid for six thousand dollars for this project?
Second. You have a motion in the second? Uh, is there any other discussion?
I guess it's gonna be the same question for all three. Do we have a process for identifying need or morphing with what it is we're asking them to solve?
I think as far as this first one with Cormier, it's, it's pretty clear what we want them to solve. We don't want foot traffic crossing vehicle traffic in drop-off or pickup. That's, when you talk school design with anybody, you can separate busing traffic from parent drop-off traffic, from parent park and walk-kids-in traffic. And that's what we're trying to solve. We don't have a lot of room around Cormier to do that. And you've got Broadway, which has a fair amount of traffic in Cormier. So, it restricts what our options are. But we have an idea of what we think will work. And they're gonna help us see if that's the right plan or tweak that plan so that it works. So, I think this one, we're pretty clear on what our goal is. Student safety and getting them in the school as efficiently as possible.
Going back even a couple of years ago, it was, we're meetings held with Maria, with Chief Dunning. I know, I think Mike, though, was part of that. I thought, I mean, that's been talked about, whole safety drop-off, that way out has been a topic of discussion. The other concern has been concerning the neighborhood, just the parking and.
And the traffic on that.
Going to a no parking side of the street and.
I even got a compliment on it today from the parents. Wow, this looks great.
So, we have a preliminary design?
We have an idea, but it's not really designed. And so, we have some idea of how we could do it. But they're the experts. They've done this before. So, we'll show them what our thought is, but then they will come in and.
Fine-tune it?
Fine-tune it. Or they may say, no, this isn't gonna work because of this. We recommend this. And so, they'll come in and look at our idea as a starting point.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion in the second to approve the Retler for master planning at, or for the Cormier parking lot. Any other discussion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Number four, master planning services. Tom?
Again, this is, um, the purpose of the master planning, um, and I'm gonna move ahead just one, because we're, in the next one, we're talking about the design services for, how are we gonna infill that pool? And, you know, I, I talked with Fred Parrish from, um, from Brander. And we've come up with some ideas that are hopefully less costly and also able, allow us to utilize that area and some of the structure under the pool vessels. So, part of doing the design work is also coming up with some master design concepts in case infrastructure needs to be put in place before the pool gets infilled and stuff like that. And so, it's kind of, they kind of work hand in hand. But the design services are, we'll sit down with the administrators, building administrators, Keith and I and Brander, and come up with the ideas on what the vision will be, which we'll share with you guys. How are we gonna repurpose those spaces we have in all the locker room spaces? We have the pool office spaces. And so, all of these need to have, hopefully, an idea and a concept so that we can move forward without being helped or scalded. So, that's what the master, uh, planning services are designed to help us with. To learn the pool properly and then help us allocate those spaces to the, you know, the best we can of the students and staff.
We knew this was coming. I mean, we have to, we have to do something with it and to, to move things around when it, when it does happen, you know, when we do get to the pool finally in place, so.
I think my concern, knowing that our budget is also on here and Keith has predicted a tough budget year next year, is when we look at what we're doing, I wanna be doing it for the right reasons. I mean, part of the reason is that we have the space. But if it isn't something that would rise to the top in a tough budget year or a tough, simply tough budget in schools, I wanna make sure that we're doing it for reasons other than simply having the square footage. Although, I totally better understand why we're planning at the same time we're filling, after what you just said. I mean, that does make sense to me. But if we look at our district and what would best serve our students in that space, what would our answer be? And if it's, if what would best serve our students isn't even in that building, I think we need to hear that too. You know what I mean? Like, if here's the pot of money we have to spend, we do it there only because we've got the square footage. But that's not gonna serve the students best. I just think we need a bigger, as big a vision as we can manage.
We, we'd hate to design it and then be pigeonholed into, this is the only, this is the only thing we can do with this space. And so, that's why we wanna, we wanna think ahead. We wanna think years ahead. Because, you know, when we look at all the spaces that are gonna be vacated and reallocated in the school district, it's gonna take several years to, to, to finish that plan and that vision. Probably up to seven years. And so, if we don't plan it right in the beginning, it makes it more difficult in the end. So, we wanna make sure that we share the vision, that the concepts are out there, that everyone is on board with it, and then move forward. So, that, and that's what those services are designed to, to help us with.
Keith, so just so everybody knows and realizes that, that by filling the pool and this is not part of a referendum project. This is gonna be coming out of our.
It's coming out of our, our maintenance plan, our ten-year plan. And I talked with Jenny today about this. I don't see filling the pool in as an option, as a, as a liability. An empty pool vessel is probably about as bad as you can get, because there's just so many bad things that can happen around an empty pool that we have to do that. And I think we don't have a choice but to do that next budget year. The planning services is what goes beyond that, okay? That we'll fill the pool in and make sure it's structurally solid so we can do something about it. This planning services are, what are we gonna do with that space? What are our options? What can we do? How do we fill the pool in in a way that we have plumbing, electrical where we need it? Or the ability to be flexible with it, with channels and conduit? So, we can use that space as effectively as possible? And how do we wanna use that? So, those, those will be some of the discussions that we have with them as part of the planning. The next item after this where they're talking about infill, that's a have-to-do and Brander's the expert in that area as far as engineering-wise. What can we do with what's there without having to destroy all the concrete that's there for the pool and make a safe, long-term use of that facility or that area of the facility?
Do we have a motion for this master planning service from Brander? Construction for only seven thousand dollars?
I'll make a motion to approve, number four, item number four.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, second by Barb, to approve the, uh, proposal from Brander, Construction Technology for seven thousand dollars? Any other discussion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes five zero. Uh, number five, pool infill and slab design services. Same thing we've been talking about, Tom, just, uh?
Correct. This is the, um, this is the nuts and bolts part where they draw bid specs, design specs, say where the footings would go, how we're gonna, um, cover the space, where we're gonna fill it. You know, do we have options of leaving that space below the, the well open and use it for storage? So, these are the things that we're gonna work with Brander, when we design the specs to, uh, put up for in that pool area.
Okay.
So, I just wanna make sure we're clear. This is a more detailed service than the planning services. This is developing bid specs. So, then we can go out to construction companies to take care of the pool and have the bid specs designed. The other ones, we're still gonna have to do this step on before we go out to bid. This is the step to go out to bid. So, we are ready to go. When the new pool is open, we can start, be bidding even before the new pool is open and be ready to start construction once the pool is open.
So, this plan comes back to us for approval. If we don't like it, we can, say, go back to the drawing board or something?
The planning services, the previous one would come back before we would go out to bid. This one, it's gonna be, how do you fill it in? What's the most cost-effective way to do it right? What will come back to you will be bid results. So, then we'll be asking you to accept the bid from this company at the lowest price for, for this part of the work.
Okay.
What about timing? Is that the best time to have that done in September?
Well, and that, that's one of those things we're gonna struggle with. The what I think, the reason I think it might be is, a lot of the people who would be bidding on this work are companies that do a lot of outdoor work. They can do this over the winter. It's all inside. If we don't have to take the roof off of the old pool, this might be a good small project for a company to keep people busy during the winter if they can't do outside work, or, you know, are limited in what they can do outside. So, this might be the right time, but that's something we'll talk with Brander and Tom and I'll look at. And work, maybe talk to a couple contractors, see how they feel about bidding this type of project at this time. So, we could, we could bid this this spring if we wanted to. But the work really isn't gonna be able to start until probably November.
But those costs stay the same?
If we, we can bid it out with, this is the starting work date, so they'll put their bids in. But the contractors like to bid early and plan their timeouts, so they know that project's lined up. So, that may be the way to go. But that's something we'll talk with Brander and, and maybe talk to some contractors and decide the right time. My concern is, I don't wanna let the pool vessel sit there, empty, unused for six months or a year. I just think it's a safety issue.
Having the bid specs, having the bid specs in hand will allow us to bid it at the most opportune time. So, let's say there is delays in the pool project, which, you know, that could happen during the winter project. And it goes through October, November. It might not be till December. But at least we'll, we'll have the information at hand. And we'll see, you will know when the pool's gonna be finished, and then we can start that process, so.
I was just wondering if it would disrupt the students' day, if that's going on. They're like, no.
Hey, we have two big projects going on outside. They're building right now. Three big projects.
Yeah, but that's, they're not gonna do it. You're, right, you're not doing anything with the locker rooms or anything right now.
Not right now.
This is just filling the pool. Can't be any divorce and what's going on.
Right.
Is it a mess over there?
Yeah.
Is it noisy?
We'll be in class and like, all of a sudden, there's a good drill going in the wall, like, err. Then you're trying to like read literature and like, err.
We only got another nine months in that.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the right condition for, um, the infill and slab from Brander Construction Technology for twenty more thousand dollars.
Second. Motion in the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Thank you. Number six, final budget adoption. Keith?
No slides?
No slides. I know we get so many fans here to come to the meeting to talk budget. Students just love it when I talk budget, but.
Is that true? Put a bunch of liars.
So, I sent the information out to you. The good news, bad news of the situation is, we received more aid from the state than what we were told we were gonna get in July, related directly to our budget being underspent for the year. So, that's good news in the short term. The bad news long term is, that means next year, we're gonna see the aid go down significantly. So, we just need to plan for that. So, where the additional aid doesn't increase our budget, it increases or decreases the amount of taxes we have to levy. The budget revenue limit calculation is, stays the same regardless of the aid. On top of it, to make things even more confusing, we ended up with less resident students than what I had projected in the budget. And of all the backwards things, the less resident students with where we are in the formula meant a little more revenue limit room for this year. But it means we have almost a million dollars in declining enrollment exemptions that next year get taken right off the top. So, what I'm trying to tell you is, while the budget looks good for this year, this is bad news for next year's budget. Because we have a million dollars right off the top of next year's budget that we, that are, it's a one-year exemption this year that we won't have. So, we're able to balance the budget this year and actually add a little to our budget. My recommendation is we put that into Tom's maintenance budget. Use that to pay for more of the Cormier project out of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget. So, we have less need out of sixteen, seventeen. So, that's that much less that we'll need to reduce next year to balance our budget. In addition, with the additional amount that we have in aid that we received, I'm recommending, because that's lowering our tax levy and we had some property value increases more than what I projected at the annual meeting, that we make some adjustments to our levies. One, to Community Service Fund, because we're gonna have some cost with the construction using utilities and connecting to our building will lose some heat. And two, preparing that, the Community Service Budget for the increase next year, that we adjust our Community Services levy up fifty thousand dollars. And then I also adjusted up in my proposal, the levy for our long-term debt, for the bonds that we have for the high school and elementary referendum. That money will give us some flexibility next year when we see a large drop in equalization aid. So, we don't see a large increase in mill rate. We can offset the increase in taxes needed in the general fund by reducing our debt service taxes. We have just five, six payments left on our bonds. And then we're gonna be debt-free from our referendums. So, we would take this money that we're levying this year and use that to reduce future payments. So, my, my goal is that we keep a stable mill rate. So, homeowners in the community have more predictable property taxes.
So, it'd be a slight decrease.
We have a slight decrease in our mill rate based on what we had this year and below what we showed at the annual meeting.
So, for the average household or a hundred and fifty thousand a house, that's a decrease of?
I'm gonna say ten dollars.
Ten dollars, yes.
It's not, it's not gonna be a huge decrease, but it shouldn't be an increase. That's, that was my. Yeah, flat was my goal, but it would indulge.
So, you're anticipating next year, then, with what we're doing this year, we should be able to see a flat rate again?
That's my goal. I believe we'll have enough in our debt service to offset next year's levy to be able to do that. And that's taking into account the increase in the Community Service levy as well with the buildings, the new facilities opening and the utilities associated with that. We should be able to offset that as well.
One of the other things, this is just a little bit off topic, but one of the other things, when we put that turf field in, was there, is there money being put away for that? For future, uh, maintenance?
We are not putting money in, in for that. That, it, it's something that we have a slight positive, when the fundraising exceeded the cost of the projects, we have some money sitting in a fund there. We haven't collected yet from all the donors, because we have pledges, some spread out over five years. But once we get that settled, that money will be set in a separate account. That could be something we've talked in the past about, a fund, was it forty-three? That we could put money in in five years. Now, we, we could spend the money. That would be an area where that might make sense. We could put money aside and start putting money aside into that fund for turf replacement if you wanted to. That also could be used for any other building projects if you wanted to do.
So, when we chatted about this, did we put any, start?
We have not. When we, the board approved creating the fund, but at the board meeting, the request was made, and I can't remember who did it, that we gotta bring any deposits to you before we make them. At the point last year where we got to where we could've made a deposit, I chose not to bring a recommendation for a deposit. The reason being is, we're borrowing money right now for cash flow purposes. I didn't wanna tie up this money. Once you put it into the, the separate fund, we can't use it to offset cash flow needs. So, then it means we have to borrow more. So, with our fund balance down last year, I didn't feel it made sense. Our fund balance is up a little bit this year, because we had this, we underspent our budget last year. It may be worthwhile doing it. We could, we could start with a thousand-dollar deposit or less just to start that five-year timely, time clock ticking. Once you're, after five years after your first deposit, all the money's accessible. So, it's up to you. If you're comfortable with it, we could put a small amount in this year and do it sooner rather than. rather than later, so we would have the money available. It's what you're comfortable with.
When I was at the last meeting with the state and everything, the, one of the resolutions that's moving forward is to try to move more funds to be able to do that, except the building funds besides that. For instance, like technology, having a sinking funder risk, you use today's money instead of money that we're getting taxed on, you know, negative, negatively aided on, you know, a few years from now, more than what we're getting right now. So it's, it's all today's money taxed, but you're using it five years from now. So they're, they're, they're pushing forward to try to get more accounts being able to do that. I think that it's your negative, negatively aided districts that are probably putting more of it in.
I think it's actually a lot of the positively aided districts. What happens if you're a positively aided district? If you get to June and you've underspent your budget like we did this year, now you're losing aid for the next year because your aid's based on your actual expenditures. So I think the positively aided districts, if they would come in with a positive health insurance variance like we did, they would deposit that money into this account, so it would be an aidable expense and they'd get aid on it the next year. So the positively aided districts really have an incentive to spend their budget and spend all of it so they keep their aid for the following year. We're really, because we're negatively aided, we're in the opposite boat. If we don't spend, if we underspend our budget, we get more aid the following year. So it's a, it's a different game. One area where we could use it to our advantage is if we see a year where we see a very cold year where we spend a lot more utilities or have other high expenses where we're going to overspend our budget, if we're going to bump up against the aid hold harmless, that would be a year that we'd want to put money into this fund because then it wouldn't, we wouldn't be losing the aid the following year because we've already hit the maximum reduction. And in a sense, we could put the money in there on, without the aid penalty and spend it. It's already post-aided, so then we'd be.
But right now, it's only, it only can be used for building projects.
Can only be used for building projects and it has, there has to be some money in there for five years, has to be in a completely separate account. So like I said, it can't use it to offset our cash flow borrowing needs or anything else. It's a completely separate account that really is hands-off until we're five years out.
So, and, and why, is there, is it required that it be a five-year?
Yeah, the state law that started it said five-year. What, what they want to do is encourage districts to save for a project rather than spend and borrow and, and then do the project.
So what happens after the fifth year?
Then the money can be spent however we want to spend it. It's unaided at that point. Because it's already been aided when you put it in there.
But it has, it still has to be earmarked for a building project.
Right now, for a building project, the stuff Mark was talking about, proposals have the state to loosen those restrictions. But right now, it's just a construction site where a building project, so football, turf field would be, would be a project that would be acceptable. In addition, roof projects, parking lot projects, anything like that, most anything that would fall onto Tom's 10-year maintenance plan would be acceptable in that fund.
I always think you should put like $6 million in that.
So the budget that you have presented here, I mean, the adjustments, Keith, if we wanted to, would we just adjust that? If we wanted to put $1,000 into, to start that fund going, or would we?
So I would see, I would see you have two options to do that. I think we want to adjust the budget to do it. The first option would be to not increase total expenditures, reduce the five-year maintenance budget by $1,000 and then put a thousand, you know, take $1,000 out of the maintenance budget and put it in there. So that's option one, keep a balanced budget. Option two would be to have expenditures be $1,000 more than revenue and use that $1,000 to put it in there. So those are two ways that I would see that you could make that if you wanted to put $1,000 in.
And just to be clear, it's not like you have to spend it in five years.
No, you can sit, it can sit in there as long as you want it to.
As long as it's beyond five years.
Yes, as long as it's beyond five years, it earns interest.
I'll, I'll give you an example. The Village does things a little bit different when they buy different things. It goes into a, every year we levy taxes to, it goes into a big fund. When we want to buy a fire truck, we can go in there, we can buy a fire truck. We don't have to go to borrow it for it. I mean, then you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy a fire truck. So I mean, this is the same concept. If you want to put a roof on, you start doing it now, you put $5,000 in there, and in 10 years, when you need a roof, you got enough to put your roof on.
Right.
Would it make more sense to start this at the end of the year if we are under budget by a thousand?
That's what a lot of districts have done. What I would say is we'd want to probably look April or May because then you have the money to spend summer projects. That's when most of these projects would be done. So I, it, I'm fine with making that move.
I would wait, and that's the same thing I was thinking.
So what, what, what option is to leave the budget as, as presented? And in Tom's budget, if we have a variance for utilities, if we have a variance on some of the projects that he's doing, we have $1,000 we could put in there.
Isn't it something like what we do to the local control dollars right now for the schools in a roundabout way?
Yes, it is. When we underspend it, we carry it over.
Carry it over.
But, but that's not aided until the, the school actually spends it. So that's where the difference is and there isn't any requirement. But that's really what we're doing with the local control where they can save up for something larger that wouldn't normally fit in their budget.
I'm sure Tom can save somebody by the end of the year.
Keith, is there a minimum?
No.
So you could put a dollar in to get started?
You could put a dollar in, but the problem with that is it's a separate bank account and bank accounts for businesses don't work like individual bank accounts. A bank wouldn't let you keep a dollar balance without charging more than that fees the first month.
Well, you could get it started though.
You could get it started, yes.
So then five years now, we didn't do this, you wanted to.
Right.
I think that, that recommend, you know, that I heard as far as waiting until the end of the year makes a little bit of sense. I mean, we don't have to, I don't, I don't think that we want a budget for funding that at this time.
That's fine. That makes sense to me.
So you need a motion for this?
I need a motion to approve the 2015-16 revised budget of $31,339,605. It's presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second? Is there any other discussion? All's favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
One more agenda.
Yeah, one more thing. It's all we have. Just want to learn about taxes now?
This only will take you two minutes. Final levy adoption.
Okay.
So as part of the budget, we have tax levy, and as I mentioned, revenue limit sets, revenue limit, less equalization aid equals the maximum you can levy in the general fund. And then we have a couple other levies, the debt service fund to pay off the bonds for the high school and elementary projects, community service fund to run the buildings for the community usage, and then the remediation debt levy. As we had approved in the state budget, the ability to levy outside the revenue limit for a remediation project. So we're levying $124,416 into that for the remediation projects, $400,000 in community service fund, $1,275,000 in the debt service fund, and $17,345,745 in the general fund. Total levy of $19,145,161 is my recommendation. Mill rate is just under $10. Last year's mill rate was $10.05.
Keith, I didn't look for this number. How much has the debt service fund increased from?
From last year?
Or from what was proposed? It's been increased since?
So the debt service levy from what was proposed?
Well, aren't you increasing that to offset the?
Yes. So what we had proposed at the annual meeting was $800,000. So it's up $475,000. So that will be used to prepay on debt or to, to pay off future, reduce future levies for debt.
Okay.
And that's all that money can be used for. I want to be clear on that. Once you levy it for debt service, all it can be used for is those, those bonds that are outstanding as of today. So the high school and elementary referendum projects, that money is all it can be used for.
That's just going to get us there quicker.
It's going to pay us, paid off much quicker. And like I said, we have six years left to payments on that, so.
I mean, if you really wanted to, if you, if you wanted to really give the taxpayers some money back, you would leave the debt service levy the way it was, the $400,000.
Right.
I think it makes more sense to pay it off sooner, try to keep that mill rate level as a, as a constant, as, you know, and keep it flat and, and do it this way. I mean, we've done that in the past, and I think that we're going to be knocking off years off of our debt.
Yes, we will.
You know, by the way, we're doing it.
Or completely offsetting the reduction in equalization aid that I'm expecting next year because I don't expect we're going to have a positive budget variance as large as we had this year. So we'll be smoothing that out.
Okay, so you need us to approve the tax levy of $19,145,161?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All's favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will point out that more than half of the students left after one of your presentations.
Well, you know, their tolerance for excitement isn't as high as it, as yours is, obviously.
Tolerance.
We have to give, we have to give the teacher an extra credit question for these three.
Yeah, they, they need credit for sticking around. Usually I don't get any sticking around through all my budget and tax talk.
There should be a bonus because they're here to, to.
Should you take the picture and send it to their teacher and say, they saved up a little bit of money?
Yeah. Who's your teacher?
Assignment plus community service? So assignment plus community service.
Yeah, there you go.
Any service hours for being?